We'll call this council meeting to an end. Would you please stand and say the pledge with me?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So if everybody could please silence their cell phones or electronic devices for this meeting and to comply with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act. There's a voluntary survey in the back of the room over here by the box if you would please fill out the survey. So just maybe a couple of things before we start. I noticed that the mayor's not here tonight. The mayor had actually had knee surgery. He's at home trying to recuperate from knee surgery, so he wasn't able to make it here tonight. He did say he wanted to thank everybody for their thoughts and prayers. If you would just kind of keep him in your prayers for that. I know that Kevin's not going to be here tonight. He called me. He had an issue at work. I'm not sure about Derek. So if we take a roll call, I guess?
Viola McKenzie.
Here.
Jada Gaines.
Here.
Daryl Holland.
I'm here.
And Kevin Fleetwood and Derek Cavington, as we know at this point, Adam Sutherland.
So at this point in time, have you guys got a chance to review the minutes from last month?
Make a motion. Make a motion. We approved the minutes from June.
So all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? I'll abstain. We still pass it two to zero? We don't have three? I will.
No.
I'll table that till next one.
I'll table that till next one.
So all business, we've got the second reading of additional appropriations fund for Veterans' Way.
Ordinance 2019-14 is an additional appropriation for Fund 803, which is the draw-on fund for the Redevelopment Commission that is to be spent only on Veterans' Way. The request is for $727,311.91, and that is basically to repay, there was a couple of draws, a few draws made for right-of-way purchases for Veterans' Way that were reimbursable by federal funds, so they've gotten eighty percent of that money back and been having to repay that on the draw-on. So that amount would cover those repayments. Ordinance 2019-15 is for Fund 802, which is the regular operating fund for the Redevelopment Commission, and there they are asking for $500,000 additional appropriation. They have a draw-on payment due here in July in the next few days, and then some cash reserves, appropriation reserves to continue their work and repayment here. This is on second reading.
If not, I'll entertain a motion to pass 2019-14 and 2019-15 on the second reading. So all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed?
Thank you.
New business, Baker Tilly.
I'm Jeff Messer with Baker Tilly, and I spoke at the Board of Works meeting a little while ago, and one of the things I mentioned was that I think in front of you tonight are two resolutions.
Yes, two resolutions and an ordinance.
And those resolutions are, actually, I don't know if you have those in front of you, or I might be able to explain to council what those are. Can I see them?
Yes.
So Resolution number 2019-6 is a resolution that allows the city to bid public fund CDs not only to your local financial institutions, which you are required to do anyway, but it also allows you to also ask banks that are qualified to do business in the state of Indiana that are not in your political subdivision to bid as well. So our, the group that I work in invests public fund dollars for cities and towns throughout the state of Indiana, and we invest a little over, about $1.5 billion. And when we do competitive bids for certificates of deposit, we, like I said, we always bid to the local financial institutions, but because we're all over the state and we can see, you know, who's offering higher interest rates, we typically add three or four banks to the bids every time we do it, and we found that that allows, you know, the cities to make additional dollars by bidding competitively like that. If we didn't pass this resolution, you would be confined by law to only use your local financial institutions. This just gives you the ability to go outside if you wish. So that's what the first, 2019-6 is. Are there any questions on that? The second resolution, 2019-7, is, hold on, let me go back here. Oops. Actually, was there the ordinance, the ordinance for maturity ordinance?
2019-7? Is that what we were going to?
Seven is one of them, but there should be another one that is a maturity ordinance. Seven kind of is an investment policy that goes along with a maturity ordinance.
Did you find it?
All right, hold on.
That may have been the one that I'm not sure I've received.
Okay.
We were given two resolutions and two ordinances. Additional appropriations is seven fifty.
If you have the information, if you know the information that you go ahead and discuss, we can always sign.
Okay.
I can get them, I can collect signatures on a different time.
So 2019-7, if you go to the, if you go to the third page of that resolution and look at the bottom there where it says investment parameters, in the second paragraph, it says the city may adopt an ordinance pursuant to 513-95.7, which authorizes the investing officer, that's Ashley, to invest in securities with maturities greater than two years but not more than five. And that's the ordinance or the resolution rather that would need to be passed, adopted along with this ordinance, which is an investment policy. So those two would go together. But this additional-
Is that 2019-16 ordinance? The paragraph one C?
There should be an ordinance, 2019-16, investing in public funds. Do you have that one?
Dash what?
Sixteen.
It's one page.
Now, you gave me the seventeen.
Let's move it.
So yes, so this is it. So this is dash sixteen. This allows you to invest in maturities greater than two years and not more than five. And once our program gets started with you guys, as we invest dollars, and the reason you might want to invest a little bit more than two years in terms of maturity with the city money is if you start to see interest rates go down, which believe it or not, we might be in a period of time where folks are thinking interest rates might be going back down again. It's not a bad idea that if we, as long as we meet our liquidity needs, to invest a few of those dollars out a little bit longer to kind of capture those higher interest rates while rates are going down, so you can still earn a higher rate on that. And this gives us the ability to extend maturities a little bit, and just more flexibility when you're investing city dollars. And along with that, in conjunction with sixteen, would be that resolution 2019-7, which is a written investment policy. As you pass sixteen, you're required to adopt an investment policy that kind of goes along with that, and that's what 2019-7 is. And this is a, seven is, this is what most of the folks we work with, this is essentially a carbon copy of what a lot of cities we work with have on the books right now from an investment policy standpoint. When you're going out to issue bonds in the marketplace, one of the things that the rating agencies ask for sometimes is a written investment, do you have a written investment policy? So if you have one and you can show them that, that's a good box to check from a rating agency standpoint. But it's also a requirement if we're passing the ordinance. So those are the two items in front of you guys tonight. The group that I work in works, like I said, with cities and towns throughout the state, and the idea is to really help you guys structure some of your dollars that are investable, core investable dollars, dollars that you know you're not going to really need to spend right now, and if we can invest those out a little bit further, we can capture some higher interest on that. Are there any questions?
These were emailed to us prior to the, oh, should have been. I didn't receive them.
I don't remember seeing that.
I didn't. I didn't email them. I just didn't get any.
I guess the only question I asked through this, but I just want to make sure, so before we make an investment, council approve those investments? Do you go out, find what we're going to invest, and then the council approve that?
So basically, we just passed this evening with the Board of Works and agreed that if we were, Baker Tilly had come in and I sat down and, I mean, figured as far as how much we think we would be able to comfortably invest. At that point, yes, if you're requesting that, then we can come back before the council and kind of do a rundown of this is what we've decided we can safely invest and get your approval also. I think that's pretty typical, is to bring it back before the council.
As far as the dollar amount to invest, you mean?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I think so. It's a, it's a pretty, I was going to say it's not a, it's a fairly simple process. A core balance can be defined as if you look out back 24 months of the city's dollars, and on a month-by-month basis, what's the low point along those 24 months? That's kind of the starting point, is you really don't drop below a certain dollar amount. That's kind of the starting point for the core investable balance.
So is this a contract for Baker Tilly then? Board of Works signed the contract. Okay, for how long? How long is it? There is no-
There's no term, but you can fire us at any time.
So basically, with these resolutions, the two resolutions and the ordinance, what exactly are we saying here?
It doesn't mean you have to do anything. It just gives you more flexibility under the public funds code. It just allows you to invest in maturities greater than two years. You wouldn't be able to do that otherwise. And then the other one allows you to bid to banks outside your political subdivision, which you wouldn't be able to do otherwise. So it just gives you more flexibility. It doesn't mean you have to do either of those.
Comments?
Is this a first reading?
The resolutions will only have one reading, and then the ordinance will have two, so it's going to be the first reading.
Running tight to it, at least we would have the remainder of the council able to look at that.
We just, I'll entertain a motion to pass Resolution 2019-6.
Someone?
I'll say it. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Motion carried. I'll entertain a motion to pass Resolution 2019-7 on the, for, I'll read it. I'll make the motion.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carried. I guess I'd like to make an amendment to ordinance 2019-16 on investment funds, and maybe we add a letter E that stipulates, I'm not particular in the wording, but basically stipulates that investments have to be approved by the council before they can be, just something that's got to come back to the council for approval. If we do that, add that stipulation in there. That way, there's no question about it. It's easy to lie.
Do you mean the actual investments themselves?
The actual, yeah, the amounts and stuff like that. They're going to invest.
Because when we do competitive bidding, you basically have, those rates are only good for about 24 hours, and then they go away. So timing is kind of the essence when it comes to, you know, actual competitive bidding piece.
I mean, if we're going to start bidding out, we ought to know what amount we're looking to bid out, right?
Oh, no, I totally agree with you on the, yes, on the dollar amount. Yes.
So maybe it comes back that we approve a dollar amount, and then we find the best interest rate for that dollar amount.
Exactly. Exactly. That's what folks do.
So I'll entertain a motion to pass ordinance 2019-16 as amended on the first reading.
First reading.
Yep.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Next up on the agenda, Ashley, is 2019-17, additional appropriations, hazmat funds, and 911 dispatch.
And I am not familiar with her, is there a, I think it's leaked here. Any chance? Okay, she was going to, I saw, come and discuss this additional appropriation for $27,400. Brendan, do you by any chance know anything about this?
I want to tell you everything.
Twenty-seven thousand four hundred, something they-
That's what, yes, it is, right?
Okay, so you guys have a copy of what it is?
Yes.
So it's coming from the Public Safety Fund, and since that's through us, we need to do the additional appropriation, and the other one is $6,152 from Hazmat Emergency, which I believe, Steve?
Yes, I have a funding in a fund that I can't get to, so I need permission to get it to, to get the money to replace articles that we lost in a couple of wrecks we have had with semi-trailers. The money is budgeted, it's in a, I don't really know what fund to tell you it's in, but it's not on my budget, but the money is there, six thousand some dollars.
Six thousand one hundred and fifty-two dollars.
Where was it budgeted to, Ashley?
I believe when we did budget, we just didn't budget the whole total amount, so this additional appropriation was just to bring it back in the budget so you can spend it.
It's a continuing fund that we keep adding money to all the time, it's just some reason it did not get into the budget to be used, and now I need to get the money.
So instead of taking it, add additional appropriations, why wouldn't we take it out of the Public Safety Fund?
Can't add it to the budget, it wasn't worth it.
I mean, I'm just wondering, why wouldn't we, because it's hazmat material for Public Safety, why couldn't we take it out of the Public Safety Fund?
That is, yeah, I don't know. I do have the count for this and everything, so whatever you want to do, but I need some monies to purchase some-
He's got Hazmat Fund, it just hasn't been appropriated.
I mean, I think the money's probably better served coming out of the Public Safety Fund rather than, that'd be my opinion on it.
Yeah, and I agree with you, Jamie.
Then the 911 dispatch, that was going to come out of the Public Safety Fund as well, right?
Yes.
Brendan, is this for the IT engineer?
What was the amount again?
It's 27,4, and this is 27,399,92, so I'm assuming it's 27,4 basically, right? Eight cents short. There's a-
I don't think that's what that is.
No, that's not what that is.
Because that's like fifty-some thousand, isn't it?
No, no, we're only paying half of it.
Oh, we're only paying half.
We're only paying half.
I thought fifty-some thousand was half of it.
No, 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 that's the total. So if you look, let's say, yeah, 54,799 is basically the grand total, and then it comes down, and it basically shows half of the total requested, it's 27,399,92. So we'd be responsible for half of that. Is that what that, do we know if that's what that's for? Who was supposed to be talking about that?
No, that's not what that's for, because that's the next thing on the agenda. That is what that is for. Yeah, that 54, whatever amount you said.
Yep.
That's the total for the salary we pay half, the county pays half. That's, that's the next thing on the agenda. That's not what we're talking about.
Well, we're talking on the additional appropriations, there's two line items. So one, you've got your hazmat, and then you get down here to the 27, so it's all in the same, it's all in the same ordinance. Is this the right ordinance? If we change where we're going to bring the money from, is this the same ordinance, or do we have to do this differently?
If we change where we're going to take the money from, we'll have to separate the management money that's being requested, and we'll have to do another, that'll have to wait until next week.
Okay, so I would, I guess my, I would recommend maybe we table this and then come back next month, but I would, if we're looking to bring the hazmat funds and then the 911, basically the IT person, is what I believe that's for. I think those should come from our Public Safety Fund. That's my opinion.
And I agree with the lack of clarity here. We need to either table this-
Table. Table. And I'll explain when I get up there.
Is that okay with you guys? It's not going to put you up behind or anything?
I will explain.
I make a motion, we table.
Second.
An item is tabled. Sorry. So Chief, you're next on the list.
Okay, is the first thing on there the IT?
Yes.
Okay, so we are going to hold off on the IT engineer until next month due to the mayor not being here and, of course, two council members and that. I'm not sure where the figure of 27,000 dollars came out, because I can tell you the salary that we're looking at last was presented to me was close to 90,000. So I don't know where the 24 or 27 shows it. Unless there's another number that was figured out after I left the meeting. Rick, I'm correct if I'm wrong, that number doesn't remotely touch what we-
The only thing I can see on that number is a good 1M right now. That would be half a year, which would be half the salary for half of you.
I think this clearly says start beginning on your first one.
Okay, so yeah, so that's going to be tabled due to everybody being absent and that. Plus, there was some question on if it got advertising time, so that's why you guys ain't getting paperwork. So what we're going to do is, I talked to the sheriff tonight and Erica, and I told them that we would provide the paperwork for you hopefully by the end of this week. That way, you guys have about a full month to go over it with a fine tooth and comb, figure out if that's something that we want to do, and again, enter into a MOU. And I think that's a smart thing to do right now. So yes, that will be tabled in that.
And Brendan, I'm sorry for putting you on the spot back there. The last time that I sent Erica an email, she had basically asked me, was it advertised? And I said, yes, everything's going to go. That's the last, right?
Okay, yeah, so, yeah, but yeah, like I said, not a big deal. So yeah, that's where we are on that.
Then you have fireworks?
Okay, fireworks. So this is one thing, I know, I'm not expecting a decision tonight, just a little bit of clarity in that. We are, of course, into our fireworks season, and we're getting numerous complaints on fireworks in the hours and why law enforcement is not enforcing the noise ordinance with fireworks. My feeling behind that is it's going to be kind of hard for us to enforce an ordinance for noise complaint or noise ordinances when right now we have nothing on the books for fireworks. So I printed out what other cities and towns are doing, if that's something that we want to possibly put into place. If we decide not to put it hanging into place and just go by the state law, which allows year-round fireworks, I'm fine with that, but I feel like in the upcoming months, we need to definitely put something into the noise ordinance that specifies fireworks, because like I said, right now, I don't know that we could really write anything to anybody on the noise complaints, because again, we are going by state law and what is allowed in town currently. So I just, like I said, I know that we are not going to get anything done with the season that we're in right now, but I think it's a discussion we can maybe have, and if you guys want to talk to your district people and poll them and see what they feel, but again, it's a yearly thing and just trying to get a little bit of clarification in that.
Chief, I did get several, a lot of feedback from your post that you put out on social media, and a lot of people, I guess shame on us for not realizing we did not have a book ordinance, but I would fully support that.
And I think the ones that are presented are fairly decent in that, but again, I think it's a conversation we can have in the future, if everybody's wanting to do that, like I said, not a rush or anything like that, so.
I guess what, maybe if everybody's in agreement, what we can do is maybe, I'll get with Kathy, we'll talk with Kathy about working out a draft ordinance.
Which I already have.
Okay.
And I can email that to you guys.
I'll give you-
I was going to get it to the city attorney, but he's, of course, not here tonight either, so, but yeah, it would specify on the noise ordinance, the fireworks code too, so everything would be laid out in that for everybody, so.
I think that's a good place to start, and then we can, then we can kind of discuss pros and cons, all that, I mean, and work through it from that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Are you going to send us that? We can check your drafts. Thank you, sir. Is Brian Robbins?
We have the CF-1 renewals.
CF-1 renewals and Resolution 2019-8, I forget which is first on that.
So we're going to do the CF-1 renewals first. So we're going to do the CF one renewals first.
And did you get a list from-
We have a list, you should see this, so, this is all the renewals, I know, my, I myself are part of the abatement committee, we sat in on the meeting, they all met the requirements. This probably would have been done last month, however, we had a few questions on a couple of the renewals, I think we clarified all those questions, and I think it was the recommendation of the tax abatement committee that we renewed these abatements, there's, they met their obligations on that, and submitted paperwork, so.
Would it be appropriate to maybe re- put these in the public record and who the abatements are for, instead of just going one by one by one by one?
So I guess I entertain a motion that we do the renewals for, the two renewals for GCOM, Creep'sburg Commercial Warehousing has two renewals, Katschi has one, two, three, four, five, six, six renewals, KFAB has one renewal, Mesco Manufacturing has three renewals, Tommellage, Tommery, Tommery has two renewals, Top Flight Athletics has one renewal, Tree City Estates has one renewal, Tree City Village has one renewal, Whittaker has one, two, three, four, I'm not sure I can read it, they have four renewals, and Valio has, one, two, three, thirteen. Thirteen renewals.
Can you put that in motion, right?
Yes, right. I guess I made a motion, sorry.
And Ashley, I can get you a copy of the list.
Thank you.
So, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carried. On the resolution?
The next resolution is the 2019 is a dash eight, I think. And what this does is establish an economic development target area, or areas, excuse me, does everybody have a copy of that?
A blue, is that in fact?
It should be in the areas of red.
It's not really colored, it's all black and white, so you can't see, you can't see red. No, quick question though. Which of these areas, or any of these areas in the current tip?
There's one, or just, you're right there.
So, my understanding, maybe I'm wrong, we have to get their approval before we-
Not to establish an economic development target area, however, any abatements that are asked or requested in that area will need to be approved by- And again, we clarify, economic development target area does not guarantee you an abatement at all, it just allows us to abate certain investments, particularly retail investments.
Thank you, sir. Which one is it, which one is it? This one, just this one?
Yeah.
It's the local piece there.
I guess I'm not approved going through the resolution tonight with the draft in the way it was, because in my packet, I didn't know that we had a map, I seen the map in the air, but you can't see. You can't see.
But again, this does not establish any sort of abatements, this does not prove any abatements or anything, this just creates the ability to, it's the first step in being able to grant any sort of abatements. That's one of the reasons why we kind of went large on the, on the tip area there, because that's A, it's one plot of land, and B, that's one of the target areas for, and other services. And establishing, again, an economic development targeted area allows us to abate that if it was requested and if it's desired by the council.
I was just going to say, I would have been in favor if we didn't include it even more, or it probably would have been there, but-
Yeah, I just think just go, and wait and see what's-
We can always, we can always add to it, hasn't it? There have been projects proposed in these areas, and that's why it's been moved to this point, again, the tip, the, excuse me, the tax abatement committee is going to be hearing from the particular developers there to, and the request when they submitted their SP ones, so, we have the next month, this is the first step in being able to do.
Questions, comments? I entertain a motion that we pass resolution 2019 dash eight to establish the new economic development target area. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carried. Brian, can I get, would you mind emailing that map?
Yeah, absolutely.
Is that okay?
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
You want this one? I have one.
Okay. Anything else from the council? Anything from the audience? Darrell, you want to give your board of works report?
Board of Works report, Mark Harmon came and we discussed reclosures for the Tree City Festival, we did table that, the next month, because there's some questions on whether wanting to put anchors in the pavement, which will require a building hole, so our street commissioner and the engineer were taking a look at that, and will address that again next month.
We're at.
Would be where the stage usually is, right?
Broadway in Washington.
Broadway in Washington. It's a company that is actually bringing the stage in, with the Indian State laws after the fair accident several years ago. Tara Hagan from ARA brought to us project pay application number three, was approved at fifty-two thousand nine hundred sixty-five dollars seventy-seven cents, and this is for the Main Street project, and she did indicate that it is on schedule. Mr. Messer talked to us, just as he talked to the council tonight. Chief Bridges came to us with the couple of the patrolmen, Austin Grove and Derek Fosnot, were promoted to a first-class patrolman. Mark Klosterkemper brought a supplemental contract number two for Veterans Way Phase Two, we approved that, basically just to take that into the next calendar year. Jeff Smith came and asked for a lot of stuff. You've always got to get a jab in to Mr. Smith. We approved task order number one, or the NPDES permit assistance, and I got the information here, if you want to see it after the meeting. Task number two, WWTR local limits evaluation for twenty-five thousand dollars tax. Order number three, miscellaneous WWTP improvement for sixty-eight thousand, and then a pay application for Gas Creek Sanitary Sewer supplement for five thousand eight hundred thirty-three dollars. Thank you.
Anything else? I entertain a motion to adjourn.
It's actually-
Do you approve?